I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Karazin, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Amadis?
Here.
Mrs. Buckley?
Here.
Mr. Christiansen?
Here.
Mrs. Cook?
Here.
Mrs. Dobis?
Here.
Mr. Means?
Here.
Mr. Nagel?
Here.
Mrs. Rule?
Here.
Mr. Workmeister?
Here.
All nine members present.
Thank you. Tonight is the board's honor to remember someone who was a part of what Americans fondly call "The Greatest Generation." On Saturday, October 21st, Frank Amadis, father of school director David Amadis, passed away at the age of ninety-four. Mr. Amadis was an active man throughout his entire life. He loved to travel and play cards and board games. He proudly served his country in the Army Air Corps during World War II, where he was stationed in Italy. During the war, Mr. Amadis worked in the photography department, where he developed the pictures that were taken before and after bombing runs by the B-24 bomber planes, so the commanders could determine if the bombing runs were successful or not. Additionally, he took pictures of the soldiers, chronicling their daily lives in all the war. He was active with the 459-1 group, which brought his fellow soldiers together on an annual basis to talk about how things used to be. Mr. Amadis served as the group's president until it disbanded in 2015. David, in memory of your father, it is the board's pleasure to donate the book, The Wild Blue: The Men Who Flew the B-24s Over Germany, by noted historian Stephen E. Ambrose, to the Bethel Park High School library. As you know, we wanted to present this book to you in November, but unfortunately, the book was on backorder and didn't make it in time for our November meeting. We hope you accept our apologies for the lateness of this tribute, and thank you for understanding our dilemma when the book didn't arrive on time. Dave, we want you to know that your family are still in our thoughts and prayers, and we take this opportunity to salute your father for his faithful service to his country with this book donated in his name.
I appreciate everybody. Thanks a lot. You would really love the fact that this was being done. He took great pride in his service and in the fact that he is with the bomb group. And so, again, he would really like this. And I had the privilege of meeting along with the guys that were on there, some of the pilots, and some of the stories they told were quite entertaining and fun at the same time, but they were very good people. So, you would really appreciate it. Thank you.
I need a motion to drop the agenda for business items.
Still moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November 14th, 2017, the reorganization meeting of December 5th, 2017, and the business meeting of January 16th, 2018. Still moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. I need to announce executive session held November 14th, 2017, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information; January 16th, 2018, for personnel, other legal matters and to receive information; and January 23rd, 2018, for personnel, other legal matters and to receive information. Dr. Pescarella.
Thank you. A quality public education is the key that will open the doors of opportunity for students. Providing that education takes a team of committed people, from educators and staff to parents and administrators. The nine members of the Bethel Park Board of School Directors are also a vital part of this team, making informed decisions that direct the course of our schools. Every January, we take the time to celebrate and recognize the challenging and important work that our school directors do on behalf of our students, families, community, as part of Pennsylvania School Board Association's Annual School Director Recognition Month. According to PSBA, school directors volunteer an average of twenty hours each month to board work, but I would guess that this board devotes far more hours than that. In addition to adopting policies, voting on budgets, approving curriculum, and hiring staff, they also take time to learn about all of the issues that affect public education and work together to seek innovative solutions.
Thank you.
As is our custom in Bethel Park, it is our pleasure to recognize you at our January regular meeting in celebration of School Director Recognition Month, and present you with a few tokens of our appreciation for all you do. First, in the envelope, we have a certificate from PSBA and a copy of the annual proclamation the organization issues each January in honor of School Director Recognition Month. In the bag, we have a little treat to let you know how much we appreciate your commitment, encouragement, investment, and involvement to make the Bethel Park School District a great place to learn and work. At this time, I would ask the audience to join me in a round of applause for our nine school directors as we recognize them and thank them for everything they do. We look forward to working with you in the 2018 school year to continue to keep Bethel Park School District among the top in public education.
Mrs. Sutton, we have many items of good news to share with you this evening since our last report to you on November 14th, so please sit back and relax. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School students Elise Bermudez, Elena Sero, and Sean Conroy, who won the American Statistical Association's National Police Data Challenge in the Best Use of External Data High School category. Bethel Park was one of seventy high school and college teams who entered this national competition to analyze data sets from police departments in Baltimore, Cincinnati, and Seattle to propose solutions that will make these communities safer. The Bethel Park students chose to study Baltimore. They are part of the Big Data Data Analytics class at the high school. On a side note, the high school that won the best overall award was from the Silicon Valley in California, so our students are in pretty good company with their data analysis skills. Thirty-one Bethel Park High School anatomy and physiology students had the opportunity to observe open-heart surgery at Allegheny General Hospital, thanks to a program sponsored by the Gerald McGinnis Cardiovascular Center. This is the ninth year that BPHS students have been able to observe this procedure, as have students from other area schools, but only Bethel Park students have the opportunity to visit the preclinical surgery lab as well, where they participated in some hands-on exercises and viewed interactive presentations from doctors and lab personnel about the projects they are currently working on. Science teacher Barbara Isel accompanies the students, but they were able to visit the preclinical surgery lab, thanks to high school lab technician Leslie DeFrunk, who used her connections as a former employee in the lab to benefit our students. The names of the participating students are on the screen before you. It was a great experience for these students as they took another step to prepare for their futures. Forty-nine Bethel Park High School students successfully competed at the DECA District III Career Development Conference, finishing in the top three places in their respective events and qualifying to compete at the State DECA Career Development Conference, which will be held in Herschel PA in May. All of the qualifying students' names are on the screen, but we would like to highlight our first-place award winners. Jeremy Bueller, Sidney Burns, Cameron Bush, Abigail Colts, Hunter Dorfner, Samantha Dunn, Alyssa George, Kevin Kerr, Chelsea Hallman, Justin Lesnak, Christian McLean, Grayden Tomkowitz, Brian Torless, Sidney Barandy, Elena Sero, William Bumaza, Sammy Story, Gavin Campbell, Paige Davidson, Emily Engel, Riley Turofsky, Tom Kennedy, Ty Miller, Nick Misari, and Ryan Pushkar, and wish all of our students the best of luck as they advance to the state Congratulations to the following Bethel Park High School students who received the Extra Effort Award for the second quarter of the 2017-18 school year from the Steele Center for Career and Technical Education. Julia Hayes, Diane Krebs, Jersey Penrod, Ethan Haskowski, and Blaze Wheeler. These students were chosen because of their outstanding attitude, work ethic, attendance, and dependability. The Rotary Club of Bethel Park named Bethel Park High School students Grayden Tomkowitz the November Student of the Month, Elena Sero the December Student of the Month, and Kaylee Van Hoornbeck the January Student of the Month. Every month during the school year, the Rotary Club recognizes a Bethel Park High School student for outstanding commitment to school and/or community. Congratulations to these three students for their service to their school and community. Bethel Park High School students receiving life skills and autistic support did a wonderful job hosting the Rock Your Holidays Sweater Dance. The students invited students from five area high schools to join them for a morning of fun in the South gym. Everybody wore their ugliest holiday sweater and had fun participating in a variety of activities. Of course, there was also music and dancing, as well as cookies and snacks. The event was a fun way to meet students from other schools. Helping out were members of the high school's PACS PALS group. Bethel Park High School Black Hawk Marching Band accepted an invitation from the Pittsburgh Steelers to perform at the Sunday, December 10th Pittsburgh Steelers-Baltimore Ravens game at Heinz Field. The band braved the extreme cold temperatures to not only perform on the field for the pregame and for nine minutes during halftime, but the band also arrived extra early so they could perform on Art Rooney Avenue during tailgating time. Many longtime season ticket holders made it a point to let the band know how much they enjoyed their performances. The band's performance brought the Steelers some good luck, as the Steelers went on to defeat the Ravens on a last-second field goal. Maybe they should have invited them back for the Jacksonville Playoff game. We're just saying. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School musicians Bruce Deal, Noah Gearhart, and Katherine Kimes, who represented Bethel Park in the Pennsylvania Music Educator Association's Honors Jazz Band Concert, which was held in December. Twenty-five Bethel Park High School students will be performing in the Pennsylvania Music Educator Association's District Chorus Concert, which will be held this coming Friday night at East Allegheny High School. Singing in this concert will be Natalia Ancoiak, William Brusowski, James Coonehan, Kayla Dell, John Gomo, Garrett Hoffman, Molly Hoffman, Michaela Eisenberg, Zach Janis, Abby Carrick, Jaden Knight, Abalash Krishnudshon, Anthony Lucetti, Caitlin Markavecchio, Jeff McLean, Olivia Neal, Brian Polly, Tyler Petrosi, Connor Remington, Sarah Russell, Cameron Silman, Julian Stein, Jerry Vargazy, and Evan Welsh. Also performing as the first student accompanist for the concert will be Janelle Wu. In previous years, the choir was accompanied by an adult, and this is the first year that PMEA allowed students to audition for this position. Congratulations to all of these students. Bethel Park High School musicians Bruce Deal, Jonathan Depudaloff, Kirsten Haddocks, Katherine Kimes, Cheyenne Myers, Connor Remington, and Teresa Stolpa represented Bethel Park at the Pennsylvania Music Educator Association's District Band Concert, which was held earlier this month. At the district band concert, auditions were held for the region band concert, and Kirsten Haddocks, Katherine Kimes, and Connor Remington were selected to perform in this event, which will be held next month at Plum High School. Congratulations to all of these outstanding band musicians. News from that, music department just keeps on coming. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School musicians Janelle Wu, Kobe Coleman, Connor Remington, Anthony Lucetti, and Teresa Stolpa, who successfully auditioned and were selected to participate in the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association's District Orchestra Concert, which will be held in February at Gateway High School. Our final music news item involves our junior high district orchestra musicians. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School musicians Declan Brusowski, Zoe Knight, and Grace Geely, and Independence Middle School students Jeremy Blocklin and Samantha Wolf, who will represent Bethel Park in the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association's Junior High District Orchestra Concert, which will be held in March at Mount Lebanon High School. Congratulations to the Bethel Park High School varsity competitive cheerleaders, who won the Whipple Championship, defeating twenty other schools to win the small varsity team competition. At states, the team captured the silver medal for their second-place finish. Congratulations also go to head coach Andrina Radomski, who was named the Pennsylvania Interscholastic Athletic Association's Cheerleading Coach of the Year. We will be inviting Coach Radomski and the team to a future board meeting to recognize them for their achievements. Members of the Bethel Park High School Boys Lacrosse, BPLAX CARES group, collected toys for needy children and volunteered at Play It Forward Pittsburgh to help get the items distributed in time for the holidays. This was one of two holiday volunteering events that the team planned for December. The guys also laid wreaths at the cemetery of the Alleghenies, working with wreaths across America to remember American servicemen and women this holiday season. BPLAX CARES is headed up by teammates Gavin Campbell and Ryan Ferris. The Bethel Park Athletic Hall of Fame inducted seven new members in December. Congratulations to Craig Gob, Scott Gob, John Hepler, Maureen Hester, John Taylor Meister, Jeff Oakley, and Jerome Williams. Every Thursday, a group of twenty to fifty Independence Middle School students stays after school to participate in the Inventors Club, which is designed to allow the students to work collaboratively on STEAM projects and let their minds take them wherever their ideas lead them. Last year, the students built a go-kart, and this year, they took apart a bicycle and are using the bike parts to construct a wind turbine that will power a hydroponic garden that Mr. Spitznoggles Tech Ed classes are building, as well as to power a composting system that is being built on the IMS property as a part of an Eagle Scout project. Working with the Innovators Club, students are Principal David Minch and Head Custodian Bill Raniger. Neil Armstrong Middle School students raised over $12,000 to benefit three worthy organizations. First, staff and students worked together to raise $5,100, which will be used to purchase Christmas presents for children whose parents are American servicemen and women who were stationed overseas. The gifts, as well as a cash contribution, were sent to Operation Santa for distribution. Second, the students had a great time raising $7,153 in one afternoon at the Neil Armstrong Annual Charity Carnival, by participating in a variety of activities, including carnival games, raffles, and face painting. The money raised at the carnival was distributed to the South Hills Interfaith Movement and Autism Connection of Pennsylvania. Congratulations to Neil Armstrong Middle School 5th grader Grace Ferenczy, who was one of ten students whose entry was selected as a winner in the Pittsburgh Penguin Foundation's Holiday Card Contest. As one of the contest winners, Grace had her winning artwork displayed on the Penguin Foundation's and the Pittsburgh Penguins websites and social media sites. In addition to receiving one hundred blank cards for her own personal use, Grace also received two tickets to the Penguins-Rangers game on January 14th. Way to go, Grace. Our thanks once again go to the Rotary Club of Bethel Park, who generously donated a copy of A Student's Dictionary to every Bethel Park 3rd grade student. These dictionaries are the students' personal books to keep and use. The dictionaries will come in handy as the students begin to prepare for the annual Bethel Park 3rd grade spelling bee, hosted by the Rotary Club. This year's spelling bee will be held on Thursday, May 10th, at Neil Armstrong Middle School. Be on the lookout for more information about this event as the date gets closer. Thank you, Rotarians, for this generous donation. Memorial students collected 340 children's books, which were delivered to Children's Hospital. The project was the idea of 4th graders Gianna Fanny and Riley Woods, who were inspired to do something after reading a persuasive story during hawk time about a child who collected teddy bears and gave them to others. Rather than collect teddy bears, they asked their classmates to donate books for their Make a Difference Book Drive. They set a goal of 200 books and were pleasantly surprised when their goal was surpassed by 140 books. The book drive was assisted by the donation of sixty-nine books from the Society of Children's Book Writers and Illustrators, with many of them signed by the author's children book author Stephanie Keys, who is a member of the society, as well as a memorial parent, and was so impressed with the book drive that she shared the news with the society, who also wanted to be part of the process. Thank you to everyone who helped to make this huge project a success. The project proves that kindness is contagious. Thanks to the generosity of the memorial 4th grade students and staff, sixty-one Christmas stockings were filled with non-perishable food items that were distributed to veterans and soldiers this holiday season. The filled stockings were delivered to the Beinhauer Funeral Home as part of its stockings for Soldiers' Holiday Campaign. Thanks to everyone who supported this drive to make the holidays a little brighter this season for those who have sacrificed for our country. This school year, fifty-three William Penn students are staying after school one day a week to participate in a program called Full Steam Ahead. This program is a partnership with WQED, which incorporates PBS Kids characters to reinforce important primary math concepts such as shapes and measurements. Students meet two Mondays a month, from November through March. They enjoy a quick snack before watching a brief PBS Kids video featuring characters such as Peg and Cat to introduce the concept for the week. Then the students break off into three groups to rotate through three activities. They especially enjoy their time in the gymnasium, working on hands-on STEAM activities such as building marshmallow blasters out of Monilla folders. The younger students are paired up with an older student, who serves as their mentor for the program, building continuity and friendship. This is the second year for this program at Penn. William Penn families are learning together, thanks to a program called Scratch Junior. This year, eleven students and their parents are returning to school on Tuesday evenings for four weeks to enjoy a meal together and then to embark on learning projects with PBS Kids and the Scratch Junior coding program. The end result of the program is that each family will have work together to create an original story on the iPad with Scratch Junior, featuring PBS Kids characters. Through this active, creative, and collaborative learning program, students understand that it's okay to make mistakes and that trial and error is a valuable way to learn. By making mistakes, students learn to persevere and find creative solutions to their problems. This is also the second year that Penn has offered this family learning activity, thanks to support from local television station, WQED. The Bethel Park School District was informed by Pennsylvania Governor Tom Wolfe's office that it is the recipient of a $40,000 Safe Schools Initiative targeted grant to help reduce unnecessary student disciplinary actions and to promote an environment of greater productivity, safety, and learning. Bethel Park is one of sixty school entities, including municipalities and police departments, to receive one of the grants that are to be used for the training and compensation of school resource officers and school police officers. Our district will use the grant for its school police officer. The Bethel Park Community Foundation recently presented a check to the Bethel Park School District's Food Service Department in the amount of $2,619.77. The grant application, written by Food Service Director Joe Consulmagno, will help to reduce end-of-the-year balances for qualifying students. We appreciate this generous gesture from the Community Foundation. The Bethel Park High School English Language Arts Department and the students in stand are hosting an African-American read-in on Sunday, February 11th, at 2:00 p.m. in the Bethel Park High School Large Group Instruction Room. Admission is free. The event is part of the National Council of Teachers of English nationwide program, which is a poetry recitation and readers theater program, celebrating literary selections for Black History Month. Please note that this is a date change from what was previously published in the school district's municipalities' calendar. Kindergarten preregistration is underway in the Bethel Park School District. Parents whose children will be aged five on or before September 1st, 2018, are eligible to register their children for kindergarten in the fall. Preregistration forms are available on the district's website and on all of the elementary schools' webpages. Parents are asked to submit the preregistration information to their child's school by Friday, February 9th, and then go onto the elementary school's webpages to print off the kindergarten registration forms, complete them, and bring them to their school's kindergarten registration date in March. Parents who have questions about the kindergarten preregistration should call their child's school for assistance. I know this report has been exceptionally long, but I wanted to conclude it with an interesting feel-good story. William Penn Elementary School was recently sent a copy of the book, I'm Afraid Your Teddy Is in Trouble Today, which was written by Jancy Dunn, who has written for Rolling Stone and O Magazine and was a VJ on MTV. Jancy attended William Penn Elementary School before her family relocated to Delaware, and she was inspired to become a writer because of her 4th grade teacher, retired teacher Doris Mock. She wanted to honor Mrs. Mock with this book donation to Penn. We thank Mrs. Mock for her inspiration and to Ms. Dunn for her kind donation in honor of a memorable Bethel Park teacher. And that concludes our report for this evening. Thank you. Thank you. Doesn't look like anybody from student governments here, anybody from PTA/PTO council.
Hi, my name is Alex Linden, and I'm the co-president and George Washington, so I have the PTO report. Abraham Lincoln Elementary, the annual Lincoln Bowling Party was held on January 15th, and over eighty kids came out to enjoy a game or two. The Lincoln Talent Show will be held on Friday, February 2nd, at 7:00 p.m. Lincoln kicks off its Jump Proof for Heart fundraiser with an assembly on January 29th. Last year, Lincoln students raised over $5,000 for the American Heart Association for heart disease research and education, and they hope to beat the goal this year. Ben Franklin Elementary is off to a wonderful start in 2018. They have a flight trampoline spirit night scheduled for January 25th. They're collecting art and science contest forms for their annual event in February. Lastly, Ben is continuously collecting box tops for monthly contests, and looking ahead, they're preparing for their Valentine's Day classrooms parties and their annual ice skating party. And they're also hosting Ben's Read-A-Thon. George Washington Elementary is excited to announce that the old playground has been removed, the land has been excavated, the new equipment has been delivered, and as soon as the weather improves, hopefully, the installation process of the new playground will begin. Their Pepperoni Rolls fundraiser concluded on January 11th and was very successful. And February's going to be a busy month with Cerise and Chestnut Candle fundraisers, Washington Day on February 16th, as well as the Jump Proof for Heart with American Heart Association on February 22nd. Memorial Elementary held their Holiday Festival on December 7th. The event was held in the evening. It was a lot of fun for the kids. There were crafts, games, and of course, Santa. Memorial's Holiday Shop was held from December 6th to December 8th, and the kids enjoyed shopping on their own. The classroom holiday parties at Memorial will hold on December 22nd. The Student Store, which benefits 4th grade activities, was held on January 12th, and then will be held again on February 9th and March 9th. Their Read-A-Thon begins on January 19th and runs through February 5th, and along with this, they have a book fair at Barnes &amp; Noble on January 20th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And this is a fun day to stop in Barnes &amp; Noble, see some friends, get some books, go on a scavenger hunt, and hear stories read by some favorite teachers. Valentine's Day parties are on February 14th, and Memorial students will be able to enter the Science and Art Expo, which will be held on February 27th. Neil Armstrong Middle School wrapped up 2017 with their annual charity carnival. The families in near will be able to raise $7,153, as previously mentioned, which got divided equally between Shem and Autism Connection. The PTO has had a quiet month, but they're very busy planning a lot of new things for the spring, which includes a Read-A-Thon and a family skate night. Independence Middle School held their Chipotle fundraiser last Wednesday, and the PTSo is gearing up for their Gold Night this Friday and Bold, which is coming on February 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So busy. Solicitors' report? Any committee reports? Mrs. Buckley, Mrs. Rule?
I'll go first. Yesterday, I spent from 2:00 until late evening at the Allegheny Intermediate Unit. You want to know what some of us do that represent your school district. But just to give you an idea of what that whole group encompasses, they gave us a informational plaque because it was recognition night for all of our board of directors. And just to give you an idea, they have fifteen hundred employees, they have four hundred and twenty unique locations. Our budget that we have to monitor is $155 million point five. We have one hundred and thirty programs, we service forty-two school districts, and we have one hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and eight students that we service. We have eleven family centers and three schools for exceptional children. And that night, they bring in all of these divisions, and they give us little gifts like pictures that the children have made. They come and sing us songs. They show us all the various things that they've learned from all of these different programs. And it's just a very heartwarming, kind of tear-jerking evening, but it's wonderful to see how they've come along. The good thing is Pathfinder now is not in the precarious list. I mean, it's our center here at Bethel. They are doing very well, so they're very pleased with that. The other thing is that last night, they gave us, the blind students, gave us a bracelet that has the Braille, the alphabet, in Braille. And they were just so proud of that for trying to teach us how to use the different alphabetical letters. So they, it was just a very moving evening. During that time yesterday, I heard, I met with the union representatives and listened to their grievances. We met with Act 93 to discuss their contracts, and then we went into our meeting session to approve our agenda. So we have kind of a long evening. But again, that's our participation as a school district because we have, they're an asset, and we pay money and to belong to them every year, we use their services. The good thing is we reduced our budget by 3.8% this year. We've been monitoring all the programs closely. If they do not financially support themselves, they are not offering them. Because you know you're up against other organizations and all school districts cutting back, they're using temporary services, they're going to all external resources, and we are a competitor in the market even though we represent Allegheny County. So they have curtailed any service that does not financially sustain itself. So therefore, you know, we did have a decrease in the budget, which is good news in a way for the schools, depending on what service they had to cut out. So that was my time with the Allegheny Intermediate Unit. Tomorrow, I will be meeting with Still Center because we're going to be doing a feasibility study on the building of which our school owns part of that, too. And it's fifty years old, and it's going to need maybe some updating for some of the classes. We will be looking at the curriculum because, as you know, career and technical education is at the forefront. You have the Cracker Plant out there that is just getting underway. They are looking at another plant not too far away, very concerned about having any of the trade talent available for two huge projects. Western Pennsylvania is really hurting. So we need to be promoting and looking at the trades and making sure that the trade schools are keeping abreast of what's needed out there. Along with that, we'll also be, we've been meeting with one of the colleges and looking at how we can offer credits for the students already going to Still Center, just like you do here at Bethel, where we offer them advanced placement credits in college. We're going to be looking at that with the Still Center also. So there's a lot of good things going on in that direction. And that's it for me. Other than, I want to thank the top twenty-one that came and performed for the chamber, had a great comment, they're always so good, they were just great to have them. And Bunny Brunch, if any of you have little ones, our Bunny Brunch will be March 24th. DECA and FCC LA Club does it with the chamber, so mark it on your calendar.
Thank you. Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. On January 10th, we met with the PTO council here in this room, and that was an afternoon spent with a variety of people, Dr. Pasquarella, Ms. O'Rourke, Ms. Wells, Mrs. Floa, Lori Sutton, myself, Detective Dixon, Joe Consulmagnow from Food Service, and then we had open discussion and questions, and a variety of things were discussed there, and much of that information was then shared with the PTO, PTA meetings, excuse me, as they're held in the various buildings. One thing, or two things Officer Bun had mentioned that I made note of besides other notes, on March 27th, there's going to be assembly at the high school regarding drunk drivers, and then there will be a program for the parents in the evening at 6:30. And then sometime in March or April, the date hasn't been decided yet as far as the Police Pal Steelers Basketball Game, which has always been an event here in Bethel Park. And then on January 17th, I attended the Pathfinder School Board Meeting where Bethel Park is one of the five districts participating. We have students from many districts in Allegheny County and other counties, too, but the committee, as far as Bethel Park is one of the owning districts, so we're in essence, as I've explained before, we are the landlords. So we discuss things as far as the overall upkeep of the building, and there were things discussed about that. And then the principal there, Mr. Nick Fratto, always gives a very detailed report about things that are going on at the Pathfinder School. He is an excellent administrator, has a very hard-working staff to provide for all the children. January 25th, they'll be hosting a spelling bee. The 29th is a basketball game. February 5th through the 9th is Spirit Week. February 12th is another basketball game, and then on February 14th, they will be having a friendship dance. So that just gives you some information. And again, as I've said before, there's a website and you can go online and get more details for that. But I'm very proud to be a part of the Pathfinder School.
Thank you. Happy to have you representing us there. Any public comment on agenda items this evening?
Hi, Sandy Blackmore, 3540 Valley Drive. I'm not quite sure I understand. On page two, is Good Friday a legal holiday or a local holiday? Because it's not listed there, so I didn't know what Good Friday constituted.
Okay, basically, when you designate local holidays, they are days that can't then be used for makeup of school.
Right.
Okay. So each year, probably in the last, I'm not sure how many years, we haven't been doing this for a long period of time. We didn't used to designate local holidays, but we found the need to start to designate local holidays. So what is encompassed there are just, those would be the only days that you would say, so you actually could, I guess, in essence, use Good Friday. I mean, we don't routinely do that, but we also don't designate it as a local holiday.
Okay. And then on page four, can you tell me where the positions are being closed, the ten-month secretary, the part-time, and then where it's opening, the ten-month secretary? I'm assuming that the twelve-month that they're closing, is that the same one, is that the ten-month that they're opening? I mean, if that comes up during the agenda time.
The twelfth month that is being closed is Neil Armstrong.
And are we opening it as then reopening? And that's the one that's going to open as a ten-month then?
Yes.
And the pair position was at?
The pair position is, that is, that is closing is William Penn, and then that one is in a change of assignment then on page 572. That would be.
Okay. And in the, in the past, you have told us what the MOUs were between the teachers. Will you be sharing that information again, or is that something you cannot share this time?
I'm not sure. They do deal with individuals, so I would have to defer.
If they're individuals, I understand. I didn't know if it was an individual or a group, like, okay, thank you.
Dr. Pasquarella?
Mm-hmm.
Would you please explain the closing of the pair position and the transfer, how that works?
Can we get to that when we're under that question? Thank you.
Hey, Mike Foot, 1007 Service Drive. I know that there were a couple of different options on the table for the 18-19 calendar. I wonder if you can clarify which ones being voted on tonight?
We've moved choice one to the, from the meeting, the committee meeting, to this agenda. So that would be the one that would be up for.
So starting on August 21st?
Correct. That's correct.
With nine built-in makeup days.
Correct.
Hi, Stephanie Silman, 5087 Sherwood Road. I just wanted to thank everybody for the lengthy discussions that were had at the committee meeting last week. It was very nice to sit here and understand what was being discussed and be informed. There are a lot of personnel and staffing changes on the agenda tonight in the classified sections, changes of assignments, closing, opening of positions. I hope that we have a repeat of the open and detailed discussion tonight on those items that we saw last week.
Just back when I said-ish, those June dates would be no school if we didn't need them as makeup dates. So that's why it's really not nine days because those would be, could be makeup days, or we could choose not to have, not to take away from Easter and to use those days. So it gives us flexibility. So it really isn't nine total days. That's why I said-ish.
Brenda Paisor, 3224 Arapahoe Road. About the calendar, my recollection of the local holidays is a little different. I can tell you when they started. They started after the six-week strike in 2010. It was done for protection of the calendar for everybody thereafter. My recollection also is as far as Good Friday, Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's. I don't know whether they're designated legal or local, but I do believe they cannot be...
There are some that are legal, correct.
But they cannot be makeup days.
Correct. The legal ones, right. Like Memorial Day is a legal holiday that can't be a makeup day. I'm not sure that Good Friday falls in that because I think that's, it's not a legal holiday, that's more secular, so I think it doesn't fall as legal.
We don't get mail, do we?
We do. We get mail on Good Friday.
Sure.
Could you move your bag so we can see your face?
Sure.
You're still left. We're like putting on like... Thank you.
Any other comments on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move into the business items. Curriculum Committee and Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. There are seven items under curriculum this evening. Would anyone like any of those held out? Number three, please. Any others? I then move under curriculum, number one, the January graduation list. Two, 2017-2018 change in school calendar. Four, local holidays. Five, independent study. Six, the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America State Leadership Conferences and Competition to be March 13th to the 16th, 2018. And professional development.
Item one and two and four through seven under curriculum committee have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Amundts. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. And item number three, the 2018-2019 school calendar.
Second.
Item number three under curriculum has been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Amundts. Any questions or comments on this item?
I have a couple. We had some parents who gave some good ideas in emails. We didn't have a clear, you know, one way or the other in terms of what people wanted in terms of the beginning of the school year, but there were some good ideas in there about the two-hour delays strategically placed, for example, after Halloween, having a two-hour delay that next morning, and having records days in conjunction with weekends. Some parents suggested that. And whether or not we should explore, whether to have full Act 80 days instead of two-hour delays, which one might be more productive for working. So those are a couple of things that I'm concerned about with the schedule. I don't think that school needs to start so early. The only reason we've been given so far is that it will increase the number of days needed for test prep. And if that's the only reason, I'm definitely not in favor of it, particularly starting in the middle of August. I think it interferes with vacations, band camp, sports, the Whipple start date for sports camps and things like that. The, if five days are going to make a difference in our PSSA scores, then I think we need to look at our curriculum a little bit more closely and how we work out that sequential arrangement of our standards and so forth. I don't think that we need to have so many makeup days. I think that the, I'm not quite sure why we've always thought that we can't go into the second week of June in Bethel Park schools, but I definitely don't want to start our students August 21st.
I have one question. How much of this is negotiated with the union? How much latitude do we have on, you know, two-hour delays and things like that? I'm not sure how that works.
Well, the board of directors makes the calendar, but it does ask for some input, which, from the union input, so we do meet with them and have some discussion. Just one quick comment since it was brought up about two-hour delays. I think it was something that we talked about putting on for next year, but much like in, we had to this year where we looked at instructional time and determined that, you know, we would approve that two less. I think you put them on the calendar and with enough notice, we may be able to consider not having some of those. So I did want to mention that. But as far as specifically saying that that's negotiated with regards to the union, they have input, and they did have input, but you make the decision on the calendar.
Yeah, I have some questions, too. I was looking at the contract last night, and it appears that we have four, five designated days for the teachers to have, one at the end of each nine-week period and one before the first day of school. And I think the teachers put in, what, thirteen days more than the students, something like that around that? So we have, we have roughly another six, seven, or eight days for teachers to come when students don't intersperse throughout the year. And wouldn't it be better if we give them a couple of days to beginning of the year, maybe get them up to the curriculums that we wanted to make the changes in, maybe a couple at the end of the year, and not have to have them interspersed and make it so the students wouldn't have quite as long in the year? I'm really opposed to moving the start date up to the 21st. I think it's just way too early.
Yeah, I wanted to chime in, too, and I apologize for missing last week. I was traveling for work. But yeah, I don't like the idea of moving the date so far early. I also, maybe because I'm a parent and I have to deal with the two-hour delays also, like many of you, but I also question if that format is even an effective day. I think it's a checkmark on the calendar, but I would question whether it's an effective day because, you know, how can you teach a forty-minute lesson plan in twenty-five, thirty minutes? So I, that's what I worry, is that they're, they're maybe there, it's a checkmark, but they're almost useless days. So if we want to have more teaching time to prepare for testing, let's do full days of instruction and full days of, you know, Act 80. So we make sure that the days that we do have students in the classroom, that it's more effective.
We had done that in the past, and it wasn't working on our Act 80 days. That's why we went to this format. It was just another way to try to get more participation on that day.
I, I think it's a step backwards for, you know, a lot of parties involved.
I would say again publicly that I do think that we need to increase the instructional time. So as far as the number of ACT 80 days, those were the amount of days, two-hour delays, I should say. Those were the amount that were typically utilized when I came. The, the only reason why I could say specifically I haven't reduced those is the concern that happens sometimes when mandates come out in the middle of the year. For example, a lot of times, those are tied to the budget. So if you look at a year like this year where it was November, I think it was, October, November, anyway, by the time they passed the state budget, and then they come out with mandates that are due by the end of the year, you have no time built in, for example, like career, the career goals that are set forth that have due dates by the end of the year. That's difficult. I mean, and we're mandated by that, by the state, to complete those activities by the end of the year. So I think what you should look at is definitely putting the focus on the amount of instructional time. I concur with that. And I think having these on the calendar, but being willing to communicate out that if we don't need those, some of them, most of them, we should eliminate them and make sure that we increase instructional time. I concur with that. To do that upfront, that's a possibility, too. If you'd like to look at it and just cut those right off the, out the gate, that would be fine. My only concern with that is, again, we don't know when the budget's going to go through, and if there are things tied to the budget, we have to be able to get that information out to the staff to meet the mandates. And if you don't have the days between makeup days or full days built in, then that's where you could run into an issue. So, but I've always, since I've been here, that seems to me that that is a considerable amount of days. Not that we don't utilize the time wisely, but I could definitely agree with the statement that would be better spent utilizing it for instructional time. I wouldn't say, and from my professional opinion, that the days are a waste. I wouldn't say that. However, I would say that if you have the entire instructional time, it's, it would be better. That's my-
So is there enough time to develop another plan? Are there any other milestones facing us, deadlines, that we have to approve a calendar today?
I think that just from my own, my own experience, let alone here, I think people really are asking to know that. I would, I would approve the calendar if it were my recommendation to you, and we can always decide whether or not we want to have those ACT 80 days later, cancel those. You can amend that calendar to cancel that, if that's what you're referring to about ACT 80 days.
There are a couple of concerns I have with the calendar also. I want to reiterate what some of the parental concerns were, from my perspective as a parent. August 21st does seem extremely early. I mean, a week doesn't sound like that much, but it just feels early to me. The concerns that I've heard some of the parents bringing up about the two-hour delays were the in-service days being in the middle of the week. Probably would be a little better spent, I think, if they were more strategically placed, like after holidays or at the beginning or end of the week where you're not disrupting the work week and lesson plan. And another question that was actually brought up during the school cancellation and brought up again by another parent is distance or digital learning as, as a means of makeup days. I can see how that might be difficult for, like, the elementary school students, but with our middle school and high school students, would that be a possible thing we can look into in the future for, for makeup days as opposed to scheduling in, trying to bake them into the calendar?
That would be a contractual issue.
That, and it would also have to be approved. I mean, PD would have to say that you're allowed to use a digital day to count as a school day, and so far they have not.
I believe one of the parents said Seton LaSalle does something like that. Now, I understand Seton LaSalle's a high school, and that's a different-
Well, it's also private-
It's also private school.
Private school.
Because of this in high school, you're saying? Well, we're talking about cancellations.
There was talk at one time, I know, that there, for exemptions for that, that you could apply and get approval for a digital day. And there was some talk about that. I know that, and I know that it was out there as a possibility. You do run into quite a few, and we haven't had that conversation, so I think that would be a conversation you have to have with the union. There are issues that occur with that, or what your expectations could cause issues that need to be worked through ahead of time. What's the expectation for checking in and checking out and those types of things? So we haven't had that formal conversation with them, if that's something that we're interested in doing. We definitely have some technology, but lots of technology, I should say, but whether or not every family or home has internet accessibility or not, probably most do, fair statement, but, I mean, those are all things that you have to consider on what the expectations are and how that you would handle that. So there's just a lot of factors that, that I think go into that. One comment, I think we're talking a lot about these, these days that teachers were being in the middle of the week. Some of that is a records day, in which case the teachers do the grades. So could you technically, by rule, possibly move those from, say, a Wednesday when it ends to try to keep those even as the best we can to a Friday? You probably could with, you may be able to. I mean, you wouldn't want it to be too long because grades are due, right? And you, people would want that information about their child's grades. But to say from Wednesday to Friday, is that a possibility? It probably is a possibility. I didn't talk to that in depth with the union. From the contracts perspective, it just says there's a day at the end of the nine weeks. What does the end of the nine weeks mean directly? Does that mean the very end, last day, or does that mean, you know, two or three days out, and are we okay with that information getting out to the parents later? Those are things that can be considered, but I just want to kind of reiterate that I think many of those days that are following in the middle of the week are because of that. So our nine weeks aren't always, although we try to have them student-day wise, as even as we possibly can. We don't change the nine weeks a lot of times because those record days are already in place. So you might end up with makeup days, one being a day or two longer than the other, to keep the records days and the grades where they're at. So I just think there's a lot that goes into that, and I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I think it's a reasonable idea that people would say that would make for a longer weekend and such. I'm just giving you part of the reason why it might be just on a, on a Wednesday or-
Yeah. In, in the past, I'm sorry.
Just going to say, discuss from personal recollection and personal experience. I can recall that the records days were, when the report cards did not come out as soon as possible after the period end, the parents were in an uproar, myself included, because if you have a student that was not making the grade or cut, that you wanted to know as soon as possible so you could get on it. And the longer you wait for those grades to come out, there are going to be, parents are going to be upset that they don't come out. So that's something to take into consideration for keeping it the way it is. The second point is that for, for my time on the board when it first came on, I was always under the opinion, I went to the city, grew up in a city, and the classes in the city started after Labor Day, and I tried for many years to get it started after Labor Day here in Bethel Park. And, and to do that, you would have to run the calendar into the June. So, Pam, your comment, I don't see the problem of doing that. Well, once we tried to do that and put it to second week in June, I had parents up here that were complaining that we were running it too late. We've done it. We've always done it like that in Bethel Park. Why would you change it? Why? Oh, okay. So I kind of gave up on that one, too. So it's, trying to, trying to please everybody about the situation was just really tough. I kind of gave up on certain, had the argument of trying to start after Labor Day for it, and I just went with that after the recommendation of Superintendent Sidsett. So that's just a couple of points I wanted to bring up.
Here's my comments. First, I'm surprised that this was a very uncontroversial type of item on or agenda here. I was expecting a lot more emails. We only got a handful, and I talked to about a handful of people that weren't part of the emails as well. And the general consensus was this. The top priority was people want to be notified as soon as possible what the calendar is going to be. So that seems to be high on our list. Delaying that could be detrimental to some people. I don't know. I mean, I don't know what the magic number is, if we wait one more month or what. The other thing that I heard, and this sort of, sort of balances out, or contradicts, I don't know what Mrs. Dobus was saying about the vacation. Yes, August will be affected if we start the 21st, but then contrary to that, if you end, like, you know, like Mr. Amis is saying about the middle of June, you're going to get people there complaining about vacation. So either way, vacation's going to be affected, in my mind, based on what they were saying, and I can see both sides on that. So, but the number, second, second top priority, like was said here, without repeating everything else, there's a lot of good points being brought up by everybody, was that the institu, the instructional part is tied on the list, and the more time we can get the kids to be actually learning, the better it is, which you have addressed that already. So I think we're okay. The tough thing is which calendar is going to be best. So I didn't hear much from the, you know, it was a balance. The parents brought up good points, and a lot of good points were brought up here, so that's where I'm at right now.
I'd like to amend the attachment for this particular item to be Choice Three rather than Choice One. Choice Three is when we start the 28th and we get out the eighth. Everything else pretty much remains the same. It would be the sixth. June 6th would be the last day for Choice Three, not the eighth. Graduation's on the eighth.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Just so we're clear.
It's all scratched out.
Don't want people to get misinformation.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping it was. And then you asked the question, then.
I'll second that.
I would just like to make one comment on that. Obviously, you make the decisions. Only thing I would encourage, even if you go that route, is there any thought about additional makeup days because of this? If not, that's okay, but I just want to make sure that I mention. In other words, if you still have it out that far, and I understand then you'd be talking about a whole nother Saturday, you know, from the eighth to whatever the next Saturday is, but I, I just want to make sure that I reiterate the fact that I am concerned about makeup days, and I wouldn't want to be backed up against there. Whatever you decide, that's what you just said.
I was just going to, I was just going to say the same thing, because part of the conversation and the reason why, if you recall last week, our superintendent said he was recommending the 21st was because he's not going to change about his priorities to cancel classes, and he's going to keep the kids first. If we have another winter like this, we're going to run into the same problems if you choose the other calendar. I wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, but the other, the other thing you have to consider is, is the Saturday keeps rotating through the year. So next year, the eighth, or the, the second Saturday will be on the ninth, and then the second Saturday will, excuse me, be on the 10th. So, so we aren't going to have that advantage of that second Saturday occurring exactly one week after the first day in June. So that's going to affect the calendar in the future. I just, I just think the 21st is too early.
And we actually would have that June 7th, too, as another day similar to in the first choice that we had, because you could always put records day then on that Monday, June 10th. So there is another makeup day available. It's not listed there, but it is available. So you'd have five makeup days available.
As was stated by several of the other board members, though, we are in a difficult situation here because along with people saying that the 28th would be more appropriate for starting, we had parents who said, "We want the 21st. Please, make it the 21st." So we're, we're getting information from both sides again. It just-
Exactly my point. It's just sort of balanced out a little bit there, you know, really.
What you're voting on, right now, you're voting on whether or not to amend the motion. You're not voting on the motion, just on the motion to amend. So whether or not you want to amend the motion from Choice One, I think, to Choice Three.
So a yes vote is to amend the motion?
A yes vote is to amend the motion, and no vote is to keep the motion as it is.
I guess we'll need to do a roll call on that.
Mr. Amadis?
No.
Mrs. Buckley?
No.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Cook?
No.
Mrs. Dobus?
Yes.
Mr. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Nagel?
Yes.
Mrs. Rule?
No.
Mr. Workmeister?
No.
So now you're, you have the original motion is on table. Remains current.
You want to roll call that one, too?
Sure. Mr. Amadis?
Yes.
Mrs. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
No.
Mrs. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Dobus?
No.
Mr. Means?
No.
Mr. Nagel?
No.
Mrs. Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Workmeister?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Personnel Committee and Mrs. Rule.
There are 18 items under Personnel. Are there any that anyone would like to have put out?
Yes, I would like to have 5A2 and 7A2 held out.
Five, A2, and seven, 7A2. Okay. Okay, I move items one, I'll just read them individually. Item one, approval of extra duty responsibility program. Two, approval of extra duty responsibility program. And three, acceptance of resignation. Except for, no, that's okay. Four, approval of leave of absence. Five, approval of staffing changes except A2 is to be held out. Six, appointment of personnel. Seven, 7A2 is to be withheld, change of assignment. Eight, approval to extend leave of absence. Nine, approval to extend unpaid leave of absence. 10, approval to extend sabbatical leave of absence. 11, approval to extend temporary assignment, long-term substitute. 12, approval of unpaid leave of absence. 13, appointment of personnel, 2017-2018 alternative education program. And 14, administrative stipend. 15, information technology job description. 16, salaried maintenance at custodial employee handle. 17, memorandum of agreement with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers. And 18, memorandum of agreement with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers.
Second.
Items one through four, 5A1 and B1 and 2, 6, 7A1, and eight through 18 under Personnel have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Mrs. Rule.
I move approval 5A2. Approval staffing changes, there is fourth-time special education pair of professional William Penn.
And you want-
Should we, should we take these both at the same time?
Do them separately?
Do you want them done separately, Mrs. Dobus? She can do them together.
Both of them, okay.
So move seven.
Then the other one would be-
Seven, two.
I made seven, change of assignment, 7A2.
Okay. I need a second on that.
Second.
Thank you. Items 5A2 and 7A2 under Personnel have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Those carry eight to one. Facilities and Services Committee and Mr. Workmeister.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. There are two items under Facilities. Anyone like to have any of these held out? Okay. I, I move item one, repair of school bus, and item two, district HVAC projects.
Second.
Item one and two under Facilities and Services Committee has been moved by Mr. Workmeister and seconded by Mr. Amadis. Any questions or comments on these two items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Finance Committee and Mr. Amadis.
There are 11 items under the Finance Committee. Would anybody want any of these held out for discussion?
Bless you.
Hearing none, I move all 11 items under the Finance Committee, number one being November 2017, December 2017, and January 2018 salaries and bills. Number two being the November 2017 financial report. Number three, the December 2017 financial report. Number four being the budgetary transfers. Number five, adoption of the 2018-2019 proposed preliminary-
Number five, adoption of the 2018, 2019 proposed preliminary general fund budget. Number six is the audit services. Number seven is awarding of bus camera bids. Number eight is AIU joint purchasing board. Number nine, approval of student service contracts. Number 10, approval of tax settlement. And number 11, items declared unused and non-necessary.
Second. Items one through 11 under Finance have been moved by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry 9 to 0. Policy Committee and Mr. Means.
Okay, under the Policy Committee, we have six items, and I'm going to read them off. Number one, policy revision, final reading. Number 625, federal fiscal compliance. Number two, approval of policy, final reading. Number 612, purchases not budgeted. Number three, policy number revisions, final reading. Number 625, procurement cards replaces policy 623. And, okay, these are just announcements. Number four, second of three readings. Number 150, Title I, comparability of services. Number 236, student assistance program. Okay, item number five, policy revisions, again, second of three readings. 103, nondiscrimination in school and classroom practices. Number 103.1, nondiscrimination, qualified students with disabilities. Number four, policy number 104, nondiscrimination in employment practices. Policy 707, use of school facilities. Policy 819, suicide awareness, prevention and response. And we move on to the sixth item, policy rescind, second of three readings. Policy 248, unlawful harassment for pupils. Policy 248A, attachment report for complaints of unlawful harassment. There's several more. Policy number 348, unlawful harassment administrative employees. Policy 348A, attachment report for complaints for unlawful harassment. Policy 448, unlawful, unlawful harassment professional employees. Policy 448A, attachment, report for, form for complaints of unlawful harassment. Policy 548, unlawful harassment classified employees. Policy 548A, attachment, report for, form for complaints of unlawful harassment. And I would like to move that the Board of Directors authorizes approval of resolutions one to three under the Policy Committee.
Second. Items one to, one through three under Policy Committee have been moved by Mr. Means and seconded by Mrs. Dobis. Any questions or comments on these items? All in favor?
Can I make a comment on one of the other ones, on number five, even though we're not voting on it? Can I ask a question on it?
Sure.
Okay. So I, again, since I was gone last week, when I read through these, I, I found it unusual that our policy, and this wasn't a change, this is what, it's been in place, but the compliance officers, the superintendent, which it seems unusual from like the corporate world that the compliance officer is at the top of the reporting chain. And when I looked at some of the other policies in other districts, the compliance officer is normally like the curriculum coordinator or the HR person, somebody outside of the top of the reporting structure in the district. So it seems, it seems unusual, and I don't think it's a good practice.
We did have a discussion of that, and it's the superintendent or his designee, and that's just in the policy so that it's broad-based, and he has a designee, which it is Mr. Karazi. So it is just so that we don't have to change the policy every time somebody might change a person in that position. And that's why they make the broad-based superintendent or his designee. That's used in a lot of places in our policies, in naming.
Yeah.
So you don't have to change the policy so often.
Yeah, I understand that. I just, I just don't agree with them. I think we should be more specific.
It's listed as, as our compliance officer, who is Buzzy.
Okay.
Buzzy is our compliance officer, basically.
I mean, at least one, at least one of them, it was listed as our school compliance, because we brought that up, because you brought that up to us all.
Yeah, in the email, okay.
Yeah. So he, he's our school compliance officer.
Okay. But from a policy, I mean, you know, from a policy, you want to, you know, it, it, it should reflect how you want things to be. And I don't, I think that from, you know, a reporting, from, 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 from a compliance officer position, I don't think you ever want it to be the person at the top of the reporting chain. I don't think it's appropriate to have it be that person. So that's why from a policy standpoint, this is what I believe, that it's, it's not correct to specify the person at the top of the reporting structure is the compliance officer.
Mr. Christensen, is your concern that, that the person could be in the direct chain of discrimination?
Yeah, well, yeah, exactly. I mean, exactly. So you, you, as you create, you know, this, this, this process for, you know, elevating concerns, you know, you, you want to make sure it's in a non-threatening, you know, path. So that's my concern.
What does PSBA have?
PSBA, I, I think, is superintendent or designee, which they do a lot in PSBA policies. And we talked about this last week, is that, you know, for example, just this past year, you changed your administrator's titles. The superintendent's title never changed. So, you know, they, they do that so that if you, you know, for example, change a title, or you say, well, you know, we don't have a human relations director anymore, the business manager has just taken over that. Now you don't have to go through all of your policies and say, well, where does it say the business manager? We're going to have to change all of our policies to now say human relations director. That's just, PSBA's general, sort of what they do in all of their policies, is a lot of times, they say superintendent or designee, and that way, the board or the superintendent can designate someone else, and that can change without having to do three readings of policy changes.
Wouldn't we always have a compliance officer, though?
Yes.
So, I mean, we could easily change that wording to compliance officer.
I, I think that is, I think that is what the wording is, that, that's what they're designating.
They're designating your compliance officer as your superintendent or his designee.
Or his designee, in your case, it's been designated.
As opposed to naming a specific.
In Bethel Park's case, it's been designated to Buzzy's position.
And again, as I said, the, having been through policy revisions and the whole book and everything, the reason that you put some broad-based in there like that is so that when those people change, you don't have to redo your whole policy every time. You can...
I, I just don't, I just don't see why we need the superintendent in there at all.
It should be the superintendent's designee. I mean, then the superintendent still has the ability to designate somebody, just, I don't think it should be, I don't think it should be the superintendent's position.
I think that's, that's a wording interpretation. I think that's just the wording that PSBA always uses, so that's, I mean, I...
But maybe, maybe we can consider it and talk about it in the next committee meeting.
Yeah, we, it's a second of three.
Rather than the superintendent or his designee, make it the superintendent's designee. So it's not the same person. I mean, it just makes more sense that it's not in, in, the compliance officer's not in the reporting chain.
Yeah, and this was only the second of three readings, so we still can change the wording. I want to look at that, Trish, for that one. Okay.
I, I have a question about if we're, are we going to vote on the first three and then talk about the next three? Or I didn't know whether...
Well, we started talking about the next three, so I guess we can talk about the next three.
Technically, there's a motion on the floor.
There is a motion on the floor, but we're still, we, we can talk about, they're all...
You want, you want to vote on the motion, then we can talk about the other readings? No? You want to talk about the...
Talk about the other.
Okay, I was just...
We already started, so that's why I said this.
I wanted to ask this last week, and I'm apologizing for not asking it, but under the student's assistance program, why is it designated as 7 through 12? Is student assistance not available in the elementary level?
I don't think they call it a student assistant program.
It's the IST program?
It is an elementary student assistance program through PDE that is currently mandated. So currently, this is, currently, we offer that 7 through 12 as student assistance. But we have three referral, K through 12, which is just part of the student assistance program with county participation, which we now offer, as our primary security of Allegheny County. But they also lower the 7 through 12 specifically SAP, which is a part of the 7 through 12.
So is the IST program then K through 6? Is that where that is? Are they similar?
They can both be used for looking at average students. Sure, yes, and can still do operate the IST model, correct. But this is specifically related to the SAP program, and it's regionally assigned across the state, and that, you know, we will use that 7 through 12.
Okay, I was just wondering. Thank you.
Any other questions on policy before we vote? Okay. All in favor of items one through three under policy, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those carry 9 to 0. Mrs. Buckley, would you take other for me this evening?
Yes, there are two items this evening under other. Does anybody want any of those held out? Okay, I move, number one, the nomination of school board member for candidacy to the Allegheny Intermediate Unit Board for a three-year term, and that would be Mrs. Connie Ruhl. And number two, student agreements.
Second.
Items one and two under other have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Amadis. Any questions or comments on these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 9 to 0. Thank you, Connie, for stepping up yet again, but I will remind my board that we all need to attend the convention in order to vote for Mrs. Ruhl. So I think that's in, end of April this year.
Yeah, how that works is all school districts send people down to vote. You have to be elected from the school districts at large. So just like running for an election here, every vote counts.
Yep. Public comments on anything you wish to address the board on this evening. You have two minutes at the microphone. Please name an address. We have a quiet audience this evening? Any board members that wish to make any comments this evening?
You know, I just wanted to comment on, on one of the slides on the student achievements. There's mentioned the band at the Steeler game. I was there, and I sent Mr. Thompson a note, and I saw all the other bands through the season that were there, too, and there was like Upper St. Clair and Baldwin and Pitt. And let me tell you, not even Pitt came close. You know, the, because of the number of students, the precision of their formations and timing and, you know, and the music was fantastic. It really was.
As always. Thanks, yep, I agree. I wasn't there, but I have seen them perform.
Yeah, it was, it was really amazing.
No bias in that decision, though, right?
Was that?
No bias in that decision.
No, I mean, it was, you know, Pitt wasn't even as good as the...
I believe, I believe.
I'd like to also say, everything everybody does is wonderful, but something that really kind of hit home to me was the stockings for the soldiers. Kind of brought back memories of spending time overseas and getting, whether it was Halloween or Easter or Christmas, getting letters or cards. And, you know, we'd all sit around, you know, like big kids, you know, just reading, and it's something really nice, and I hope that we do continue that through the schools.
Those students do a lot of wonderful things. Absolutely.
I'd like to say, since you said that, thank you for your service again, Ken. I appreciate that. Also, I wasn't at the Steeler game, but I'm not surprised at all by Derry's comments because I was at the concert with my wife for the Christmas concert there, or the holiday concert, and they, they did a phenomenal job as usual. So I'd like to give kudos to them for all the work, all the, all the, you know, the chorus and everybody. I don't want to go through the name and everything here. And also, just in, oh, because I saw an email that we should be also happy about, the Chilieers, and what's her name, Adriana, she said that she got the coach of the year for the PIAA, and also the girls took second, I guess it was, what was it called? She didn't say second, but what?
Silver.
Silver, yeah, so however that was. So congratulations to them, because I don't know, I might have missed it up there.
Yeah, it was up there.
It was, okay, good. I, I must have been writing notes for the other things. And the other congratulations is to all the other groups, like, you know, the DECA and the Still Center and, you know, the Hall of Fame inductees and the public. So again, Bethel Park is, I think, always a proud, good community, so.
Okay. Anybody else? I need a motion to adjourn then.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.